Testing one, two, three. This will be the January 20th, 2016 City Council meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular City Council meeting in the City of Satellite Beach, January 20th, 2015, approximately 7:00 P.M. Please join Vice Mayor Brymer for a moment of silence and to pledge.
Everybody rise for a moment of silence, please. If you'll join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, complete, and just as for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time moving on to Agenda Item 3, Citizens' Comments. The floor is open for non-Agenda items.
Hey, good evening, all.
Good evening.
Don McQuonan, citizen. I've got a question, and you guys may have covered it. I apologize, I haven't been here, I haven't been looking at the YouTube. I apologize in advance, I'm sure it's been covered, but I noticed a former Peglet property is up for sale. Has there been a change in the loan documents or the original loan documents on that property? Wasn't there some prohibition in early payoff on that property due to a derivative product that was tied to the LIBOR?
No, we actually have a line of credit with Bank of America that had, that we used to purchase that property. So the property doesn't necessarily have a mortgage. We used a line of credit to purchase the property. So the line of credit, yes. So we have a big line of credit. We used it for a number of things. It wasn't just for that purchase of the property. It was for the renovations of Pelican Beach Park and another property purchase, and we rolled another debt service into that. And then the purchase of Sunrise was included in that line of credit. So that property itself doesn't contain a mortgage.
So you're saying there's lien on the property. The property is, well, if you've got a line of credit against the property, it must be a lien on the property.
The line of credit is a line of credit against the city's TIF revenues. There's no lien on the property.
See, unless that mortgage has been rewritten or modified, I mean, I read it many years ago, it was a big topic, of course, Peglet has been a topic since it was bought, but there were, seem to me, there were provisions in that loan document that forbade a prepayment without a severe penalty.
In the actual line of credit, yes, there is a, in the big line of credit, the line of credit was $6.5 million. So in that line of credit document, we cannot pay that off early without a severe penalty. But that line of credit is not connected specifically to the property. So we can sell that property free and clear, and it would just come into the city as a revenue.
Is that mortgage document available for me to look at if I'd like to see it?
Yeah, we have, that's in my office. So it's not a mortgage document, though, so don't confuse that. It's a, the line of credit is a line of credit against the city's revenues for the CRA.
There was a line of credit, there was a mortgage document on that property when it was purchased.
It was a line of credit.
No, we've never had a mortgage on the property.
Well, maybe if I could see that document, clarify my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, appreciate it. The floor is still open for citizens' comments for non-Agenda items. Here are none. Close the citizens' comments, City Council comments.
I was just wondering if the members of the Charter Review Committee have been given a copy of the charter that established that committee?
I don't think so yet. We're sending them a whole agenda packet on Friday, and that packet will include the agenda, the charter itself, that document there, and then a memo from me outlining the goals that I have with regards to the charter, so they'll get that packet on Friday.
And there is, that meeting is 4:00 P.M. on the 27th, correct?
Just a couple of things. I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting that we had down there in Palm Bay, which I thought was very interesting with all the folks there and the new officers and Councilman Taro moving up in the ranks there, which I thought was very good. I also attended the A-1A meeting that we had with DOT and the Air Force and Commissioner Smith. They were out there, it was discussed having the sidewalk type thing going all the way from Piney to all the way through Cocoa Beach. They were very receptive. I think the only thing, their cautions out there were is, you know, you deal with the Air Force and DOD, if you want something to happen, those wheels don't happen very fast, and you need to do it while the commander is here. And for those of us who've been around long enough to know that, you know, every two years you get a new general, the new general comes in, we repaint the signs, we repaint the fire hydrants, and we paint everything because they don't normally follow what the last commander did. So I think they kind of warned you about that, just basically tell us, look, if you're going to do it, you need to do it within this two years, do it while this guy's here because the next guy could come in and say, I don't agree with any of that, and put it on hold. So it was a good lesson, I think everybody enjoyed it. Like I said, everybody seemed very positive about it. DOT folks felt very positive about it, had support throughout the whole room, so it went very well.
Yeah, I got just one thing. On Monday, I had a conference call with Don Hughes and a lady out of University of Chicago by the name of Julie Bobbitt. She was calling us in regards to the, I think you've seen some of this, from the fall prevention and resiliency programs that we've done. She wanted to know a little bit of history from the city about how we got our EPA award that we had back in early 2008, I think it was, or 2007, somewhere in there. So we reviewed all of that, and then she said she had been at a, this is kind of a long story, so I'll try to make a Cliff's Notes version. Anyhow, they had a fall prevention conference in Washington over the summer, and it was a presidential-appointed thing where they looked, with the Surgeon General and that sort of thing, to look at fall prevention. And this is where it gets kind of neat. Anyhow, the EPA got ahold of the lady at the University of Chicago and recommended that she talk to us about our programs and our resiliency and our stop by to say hi and all that sort of programs and what Don has done. So anyhow, Don and I spent about a half an hour with her on Monday, talking with her about the program and that sort of thing, and she's going to write up a, kind of a small white paper that she's going to send to City Hall, which I'm going to ask you to proof as well as Don, and then if it makes it through the right channels, they're going to use us as one of the models for nationwide on how to handle aging, fall prevention, all the stuff that Don's working on with the community medics, what the chief's working on with Stop By to Say Hi and that sort of thing. So it's going to be kind of a nice thing. It may not make it through the vetting process, but we are least recognized as one of the communities that it's doing good things, so kind of a nice thing to have, but you'll see it come your way very soon.
Nice to have a white paper, too. Even if it doesn't make it through, we'll still have a nice, concise, you know, description of the programs that we've done.
If I edit it a little?
It'll, yeah, right.
And jump in, Lorraine. The interesting part of this is that the CDC is moving away from community-based fall prevention and community-based activities. They're moving more towards institutional, like a Health First or Wustoff or Sebastian or that sort of thing. What's coming out of Washington from the Surgeon General's side is how the communities do this. So it's, the left is not talking to the right. It's really fascinating, but we're losing a lot of the community enthusiasm over this stuff, going more to the institutional side. But anyhow, just good news for our city that we may be recognized with this. So, Lorraine, if it comes across, please edit and send it back. Okay, thank you. That's all, heavens.
Thank you. I have no comments. We'll move on to City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let everyone know that on January 23rd, the Indian River Lagoon Oyster Mat Making Project with Brevard Zoo, followed by a Marine Resources Council Program on Mangrove Potting, will be at the David R. Schechter Community Center from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 P.M. And I think this type of event is now Brevard Zoo's largest-attended oyster mat-making program, with an average of 30 to 50 people per event. So that's, and that's in our community. That's pretty cool. January 24th, 2016, Rhythm in Motion Dance Showcase will be occurring at the DRS Center from 1:00 to 3:30 P.M., and there will be two performances by the competition dancers, one at 1:00 and one at 3:00, or 3:30. The fundraiser will assist the dancers with competition fees. On January 30th, please stop by our PAL Mini Bunko Night. The doors open at the Teen Zone at 6:00, and the dice rolls at 7:00. Advanced tickets can be purchased at the Recreation Office for $15, or you can pay $20 at the door. I also added that on February 6th, Saturday, from 10:00 to 3:00, at Trinity Wells Springs will be the barbecue and car show, and our chief will be cooking at that. So it's always well-attended when he cooks, because he's a good cook. So please stop by that. For informational items, I wanted to let you know the Charter Review Committee will hold its organizational meeting on January 27th at 4:00 P.M. in the City Council Chambers. I also have received a thank you note from a resident regarding the Police Department. This is a thank you note from someone who was pulled over. So you know when you get pulled over and you get a thank you note for that. That's pretty good. And then I also received an update from Martha Kirby on the Satellite Cares Program, and I thought this was a great, you know, description of what they've handled, and it's so long that I, it's too long to read, but she did ask that we prepare thank you notes for all the participants, so I am doing that now. So if you don't mind, either I'll send them or we'll just ask you to sign it, if that's okay, the thank you note. In terms of action items, I did, oh, I'm sorry, I have one more informational item. Nope, I'm sorry, I have one, an action item I have to add to it. For an action item, I do have, this year, we have a JAGD grant, JAG grant, that we're applying for, for $1,000 with no matching funds. And I know it's common that we come up and ask you to apply for grants, but because there was no matching funds, I was going to do this under my report if you don't mind, the Police Department will use the funds to purchase a new canine bite suit, replacing a 16-year-old bite suit that no longer affords protection it once did. The cost of the new suit is $1,499, and the overage will be paid out of the PD budget that's currently there. So if I could get an approval for that, I'd appreciate it.
Consensus? Since it's an action item, I'll open the floor for public comment. Here are none. Back to council, any other further council comments?
Great, thank you. Before you, I have printed out a letter that I would like the mayor to sign. This letter is supporting Senate Bill 742. I've included the bill for your review. This bill provides basically a more structured process for the approval of emergency medical services in the county. Currently, counties are given the sole discretionary approval authority over approving cities or fire districts to provide EMS. I don't know if many people know that. So we actually have to get approval for, from the county to provide EMS services to our residents. So that is called a certificate of, what is it, certificate of public convenience and necessity. So in that, I think we do that every two years. Yeah. This bill actually provides, what would provide, require a county to consult all the municipalities within the county, as well as any fire districts that are in the county. We don't have any, but there could be some. There's other counties that have them. They would have to consult them to create an ordinance that would establish criteria for EMS services. And a city would have to, when we apply, the county could not disapprove an application that goes above or meets that criteria. And the approval of the application would then have to go through a quasi-judicial process, very similar to zoning approval, and a public hearing, and if disapproved, the city or the fire district would then have the ability to take that appeal to court. All of those procedures are not currently in place. So these would obviously be favorable to cities, and protect our investments that we make heavily invest in our EMS services. So we would appreciate your support in allowing our lobbyists to move forward in supporting this bill and your approval for the letters for the mayor to sign.
Questions? No? Consensus?
On the main.
Action item opened up for public comment. Here are none. Back to council. Courtney?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Courtney, did you go over number four clinics?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I missed that one. No, I didn't, I'm sorry. We released an RFP through our Garen Group, is our consulting firm for our health insurance. They're another way to say broker, they're a broker for our health insurance. So they released a RFP for the clinics in partnership with Cocoa Beach and Indian Harbor Beach. We did get three responses to that, and we will be participating in a presentation meeting from those vendors next week. And once we get that, you know, any feedback from the other cities and come to that selection, then we'll bring that information back to you.
Thank you very much.
Is that what I just saw is that the school board is now doing something similar to that, trying to start a clinic, and I just see something on that?
Yeah, interestingly enough, that's been spearheaded by school board member Andy Ziegler, and he's been discussing with us for a long time about that, and it was our interest to partner with the school board. So that's, it's good news for us that they're doing that, because if anything happens with the partnership with the other cities, we have another avenue there. Because we are too small to do a clinic on our own, so we would have to have another partner with us.
Any further questions for the City Manager? Thank you, Courtney. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, discuss take action on memorandum of agreement between the City of Satellite Beach and the 45th Space Wing, Patrick Air Force Base for Youth Services. Carrie?
Thank you. This is one of the agreements, partnerships that have come about from the P4 workshops that we've been working with the Patrick Air Force Base with for about, I mean, four years now. This one, in a nutshell, exchanges services between the youth services at Patrick Air Force Base, that's the building, the basketball court there by the church off of Shearwater, and with the City of Satellite Beach. So in essence, there, our civilians can now, with now, if this is approved, would be allowed to utilize their, the foreign after-school care program, and also their youth after-school program. And in return, their military families would be allowed to come and use our recreation programs, our facilities, and enroll in our sports leagues. Kind of always been able to do that anyway, but partnerships have to have something on both sides of, that's ours.
Great. Questions from council?
No, I would make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the 45th Space Wing and the City of Satellite Beach for Youth Services.
Second. A motion by Councilman Osmer, second by Vice Mayor Brymer. I think it's great, Courtney, great, I mean, Carrie, thank you for working hard on this. It's another thing for our citizens, the daycare after school and so forth. We take all their kids anyway in the sports program, so I think it's a win-win. Any questions from council? Open up for public comment on Agenda Item 6. Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Courtney.
Moving on to Agenda Item 7, discuss take action on the results of request or proposal for banking services.
You're going to let Suzanne present this item?
Thank you. Yes, so we just concluded our review of the RFP for banking services. As you know, we've been with Bank of America for a number of years. Essentially, we did not get response from Bank of America. They indicated that the pricing structure is going to continue to be going up. So we had two banks responding, TD Bank, Reasons Bank. We're recommending award of this contract to TD Bank for a couple of reasons, which are outlined in the agenda memo. Essentially, the fees that we pay monthly are going down substantially. You'll notice there, we're talking about an estimated 89% reduction in our monthly fees. We pay, on average, $1,500 a month at present, and it's going down to around $150 a month with TD Bank. So that's one piece of good news. Another piece of great information for us was the, essentially, interest credit we will earn by having a certain amount of money in the bank with TD Bank. So it's, again, going to benefit us and will offset our fees as well. And the final thing I would say is that TD Bank also, in a proposal, waived all of the initial set-up fees for the city's account, which could have been fairly substantial. But with that, it's a great proposal, and we're recommending award to TD Bank.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Questions?
We approved the award of a contract to TD Bank for RFP number 15/16-01 for banking services.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman McGaw, second by Vice Mayor, Councilman Osmer. Further questions from council? Question. This time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 7. Here are none. Back to council. Jim?
Nice job.
Thank you.
Great job. Almost 90% savings, so we've been paying that for many years now.
And this is an example of why we keep bidding things out. So you'll see us bidding our services out every two to three years. You can't ever get comfortable with one company. They, you know, they tend to raise your rates every year, so unless you bid it out, you never know whether you're competitive or not, and clearly, we were not getting competitive rates with Bank of America. So this continues the strategy that we've had for the past three years of continuing to bid out all longstanding services with the city and make sure that we keep competitive rates and the lowest cost for our residents.
Thank you. Break it up. Thank you. Further discussion? Lenore?
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, FY 2015-16 First Quarter Budget Report.
I'm going to come up here so I can see the screen while I'm speaking to you. Good evening, Mayor Cattino and council. Let me just get out my notes here. The first quarter report is fairly straightforward. It's only a quarter into the year. And we're going to cover the highlights of the report and a brief overview, actually, of last fiscal year of the general fund. Currently, the total general fund revenues is about 52% of the amount, most of it is ad valorem. And last year, our ad valorem rate was 8.3206, and has gone down to 8.2900. That being said, our revenues have not gone down from year to year. We're actually at a collection of $290,000 more than last year at this time, and mainly it's due to the property value going up. Expenses are less than last year, and mainly because last year we had a holiday bonus this time of the year, and we haven't made the transfers from fund to fund yet. I wanted to try to hold off a little bit on that, just to make sure, to see if we needed to transfer all of it. Just an overview of the other funds. Community Service Fund, Fund 101. You can notice that the expenditures are up 54%. This is mainly due to the invasive tree removal incentive that was just passed via Resolution 957, and that was about $4,400 so far that we've reimbursed. And also, there is $2,500 in there for the sustainability plan assessment that's being done by FIT. And in Stormwater Fund, 125, it's pretty much the same as last year, just the transfers haven't been made yet. And law enforcement, for us, no activity at this time. On the CRA, Community Development Trust Fund, it's a mouthful. The revenues are a little bit lower than this time last year, only because of the timing of the TIF from the county that we did actually receive on January 13th, a little over $476,000, which is about what it is every year, give or take. And revenue, or expenditures, are about the same as they were last year at this time. Capital assets, revenues are a little bit higher than last year, and as we should know, that is due to the increase in the utility tax from 6% to 10%. And expenditures are about the same as they were last year at this time. Health Insurance Fund, this is an internal service fund. It's not treated quite the same as the other funds, but it is mainly a management planning tool, and this is for our new self-insured plan. And the first quarter should be around 25%, as you should know, and we're a little bit under for both. Currently, in the revenue line item, we haven't had to transfer any of the supplemental funding from the general fund yet. We're still pretty low on revenues, or pretty high, pretty good on revenues and pretty low on expenditures. But admin is a little bit lower in the beginning because they don't charge quite as much. Does it kind of ease you into the plan, and then it's going to go up, and then to be steady for the last three quarters of the year. So to sum it up, we're not looking at doing any budget amendments in the general fund at this time, but we maybe, we are looking at a mid-year budget amendment for a couple of other, a couple of the other funds, specifically Fund 101 for the playground equipment that we just approved for Surfside Elementary, and the $25,000. And we have to, we have to account for the tree incentive program that wasn't originally In the CRA, we need to basically just reallocate fund balance for the A-1A street skate project that we just approved, and also, the remaining, what's left on the Shell Street project, which is only the amount that we had allotted would be $91,000. Capital assets, may need a budget amendment for the fund balance accounting program. We're upgrading the accounting software for the city to cloud services, and it's just a little bit more than what we have in the budget at this time. And also, we may have to make an adjustment for the website development, and that's because it may be looking a little bit more than what we anticipated. Any questions on the first quarter budget amendment, sorry, first quarter budget report? Now, I just want to go over a little bit the unaudited financial overview for last fiscal year, fiscal year 2014, 2015. In the general fund, of course, revenues exceeded expenditures, and we're looking at a net increase in $773,173. The net difference is represented on this page, and I'm sorry if it's hard to read, we blew it up a little bit right before the meeting, just to make it a little easier to read. But basically, what you're seeing is on the total fund balance at fiscal year end at the very bottom, the difference between the actual FY 2014, 2015, and the actual 2013, 2014, that difference is the $273,173. Now, what this is from, you could see under the restricted, non-spendable prepaid items, that's gone down around $89,000, and that varies a little bit from year to year. And the restricted-for-emergency reserves has gone down to zero. And that is, was the women's club money that we transferred over to the CRA for the Shell Street project. So in that, when we get to unrestricted, we have the stabilization reserve, that's going up $290,000, a little over $290,000, and the unassigned fund balance is going up But looking ahead, we have completed the fieldwork for the audit for last fiscal year, and the audit presentation is technically scheduled for March 2016, and it's really contingent on receiving the actuarial reports for the pension boards for both the general employees and the police and fire pension. And we're going to, and you're going to continue to maintain best budgeting practices, as we've been, which is conservative on revenues and basically budgeting according to revenues. And as we just passed the last agenda item, we're switching to a new bank, and we're looking to save some more money this year. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
I did want to clarify, because I did get some questions on the Community Services Fund. We normally don't budget expenses in that fund. We wait until they happen, and then we will...
We wait until they happen, and then we will, we'll parry up the revenues by the end of the year. We, so we hold reserves in each of those funds that are well above what we're spending against, so when you see that expenditure exceeding the revenues, don't get worried. We'll, we'll true that up at, at mid-year or at the end of the year.
Thank you. At this time, open up for public comment on agenda item eight, being the first quarter budget report.
Don McClinton, resident, Satellite Beach. Just one question. I was just reading through this. I haven't really studied it, but just going through it. I just noticed on item five thirteen thirty-one twelve, the payroll processing, I understand it has been outsourced. Thirteen fourteen, it was twenty-two eight, and then we're bumping that, we're doubling that in this year's budget. What's the offset on that? Where's that? Where are those, where are the savings?
Well, we didn't, we actually started that program in the middle of that year, so that's why it's half the amount.
That's not my question. You've outsourced that apparently either inadequate or insufficient staff or to save money.
To save money.
So when you eliminated a position, how much did you save?
Yes. It, I would say an accountant position, the full cost of that is about sixty-five thousand dollars.
Has that position been pretty much eliminated?
Yes.
Okay.
Public comments still open on agenda item eight. Here or no further? Bring it back to council. Any further council comments? Staff, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you, Courtney, and staff for the work. And I like saving money. It's great. Thank you.
You can officially tell Andy now, we're doing better since he's gone.
Thank you.
We still talk to him a lot.
But let him pass that along, will you? Just kidding, Lorraine.
Moving on to agenda item nine, discuss take action on ordinance eleven fifteen. Joe?
Ordinance number eleven fifteen, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending ordinance number eight thirty-six of the City of Satellite Beach by updating the City of Satellite Beach Community Redevelopment Plan, providing for conflicts, providing severability, providing effective date, first reading of ordinance number eleven fifteen.
Orderance eleven fourteen, eleven fifteen, first reading.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman McGaw, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Courtney? May I just?
I was just going to say, Councilwoman McGaw helped us edit it again, so we appreciate her work. It's, of course, perfect and beautiful, so.
Thank you. Questions from council? Okay. At this time, open up for public comment on agenda item number nine, ordinance eleven Here or none? Back to council.
I hope that everybody has memorized this plan amendment, but in case you've forgotten any part of it, would you like me to point out the changes in this amendment as opposed to last year, or the last amendment?
I've read them here on the, what we got on our agenda.
That's not all that was changed.
Actually, we just got this, so I did not get a chance to look at that. I haven't. It just came last night, so.
Then follow along. The calendar page was updated to reflect the new ordinance and so forth. And every time that, or in the table of contents, we talk about the completed projects that changed from 2002 to 2015 instead of twelve. On page six, I believe, is a list of completed projects, and the Pelican Beach Park project, the landscaping projects, and the Shell Street project were, and a description of those were added to the completed projects list. And on page, on page, on page three, as a list of history of district implementation, a description was added of ordinance ten ninety-seven, the city board's handbook changing the names of the committee and the board, and then a description of this plan amendment, and then ordinance eleven fifteen that adopts this new plan. On page seven. Okay, on this one, make it, yeah, page seven. On the second paragraph in the demographic overview, I did add that, the information that we got where Satellite Beach is now, right, number three among all Florida municipalities on, on the healthiest housing markets. I thought that was worth concluding there. On page sixteen. In that list at the top, it used to say the bowling alley, and I changed that to just describe that and say that it's the former bowling alley site. Under infrastructure, wastewater, there was a fourth, there was a third paragraph that I deleted because it dealt with the septic tank issue, which is now moved. And on page seventeen, it's the same thing down in the, the very last paragraph, there was a reference again about the septic tanks, and I deleted that. On page eighteen, everywhere throughout, I changed the word committee and board to be described as a community entity. In goal one of objective one point one, again, there was a reference to the septic tanks that was deleted. In goal three, objective three point one, we added the, we provide grants of up to fifty thousand, and I added with an additional fifteen thousand per additional unit. On page nineteen, again, it was terminology update. Table six was updated to take off the projects that have been completed and to add the beach access signage. And also, we dropped the two projects that are not going to be done as envisioned, which were the Pride Park project and the Community Center project. Page twenty-two, that was all updated, again, to reflect just the current projects that we are still maintaining or planning for. And the next page is the map showing the locations of those. On page twenty-seven. Under Satellite Beach Comprehensive Plan, at the beginning of the second sentence, that date was changed to say, on January twenty-five, 2016, the CPAB will determine that this plan is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. And on page thirty, we just added ordinance ten ninety-seven and eleven fifteen, and those are all the ordinances and resolutions that deal with implementing this comprehensive district.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Lorraine.
Any further questions from?
Have we said enough times how much we really like these tabs? They are great. They, I can't say that enough.
No further comments? Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item ten, Resolution nine six five.
Resolution number nine six five, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, relating to the legislative initiative to further regulate municipal elections, commenting on a conceptual proposal recently passed by the House State Affairs Committee to regulate municipal elections, determining that the conceptual proposal will cause a deterioration of citizens' home rule powers, opposing partisan municipal elections, providing comment with regard to referenda, ballot timing, and the use of mail ballot elections, providing for distribution of the resolution, and providing effective date. That's a reading of Resolution number nine sixty-five. And there's one typo in section four, on the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line down that starts "has been." Should just say "for decades," not "for over decade."
Your motion?
Move to adopt Resolution nine six five as corrected.
Second? A motion by Councilman McGaw, second by?
Yes.
Any further comment from council? Here or none? Open up for public comment on agenda item ten. Here or none? Back to council. Any further comment? Lenore?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item eleven, which is proposed item, agenda for our next February third, 2015, 2016 meeting. If any other additions to this, please see the city minutes. We will.
May I just wanted to let you know that your, your next meeting, Suzanne, will be handling that meeting. I will be in Tallahassee with, with Councilman Montanaro, so just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Moving to a new agenda, item twelve, additional business, addendum to our agenda for meeting is adoption of minutes for the January sixth workshop and regular meetings. Some move? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Osmer.
As minutes?
Yes. Any further comments? Here or none? Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion passes. Is there any further business before council? Here or none? Maintenance adjourned. Thank you, staff.